Terry, you want mine? Can you unmute? Let me know if you can hear me. Joyce, can you give a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, cool. Thanks. We're good to go.
Make a motion that the Pulse Media Board...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody signed in on the payroll and vendor checks?
Yep.
Okay. Did you look at the meeting minutes and you're comfortable with them?
Yes, and I made a motion to accept the minutes of the January 26, 2021 meeting.
Seconded?
Yep.
I vote yes.
Yes. I vote yes.
Seconded then?
Sorry. Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see. I've been requested by the Planning Board to see if there's any interest in joining committee to develop a master plan for the town of Wentworth. This is something that hasn't been done since the 80s and really needs to be... The whole town needs a master plan. I think the Select Board, who's not speaking for you, I think it's important for everybody in town to take part in this. Everybody in the town has different focuses on where the town should go. And I think the more that... The more diversity that we get on the committee, the more accurately the Planning Board is going to be able to develop a plan that fits the needs and requirements of the town. So I make a motion that we form a committee to do that and that it supports the Planning Board.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Because I'm the Select Board's...
Oh, right.
...official. And so, one of the things is, we're meeting with June Garnell the first Monday in March to talk about putting together the plan and things. And one of the things that is going to be done is going to be a survey of the people in town.
Right.
There is going to be a survey. So... And however, we don't know what the makeup of the Planning Board is necessarily going to be until after the elections.
Yep.
So... But, no, I think it is very important that, I agree with you 110%, that we have a lot of people, you know, involved in the...
Organizing the questions for the survey and just taking part.
Yep. So I agree with you 100%, Mr. Chairman.
Well, because why I put it on the agenda was just to, so you could announce to people that they will be forming a committee and that they're interested. I really think, I think that the Planning Board is actually...
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to solicit for the Planning Board that people would take part in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll second your motion, Mr. Chairman.
What is the motion?
I'm making a motion that we encourage people in the community of diverse backgrounds to come out and help the Planning Board develop questions for the survey so that everybody can take the survey questions home in a more reflective way to debate it, whether it's in a coffee corner at Shawnee's or wherever. Just pluck the thing out and find out what the town wants. Because what you don't want to do is have a Planning Board that comes through and just makes a decision and then all of a sudden, then people react.
Yeah.
You want preemptive thought in it.
How often is the Planning Board meeting?
They meet once a month.
Maybe once a month, first Monday each month, unless they need to meet more often.
We don't want to.
Yep. Okay.
So...
I did second one. Vote yes?
Vote yes.
I vote yes.
Start working on the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the more good questions we have, the better. Now, the, over the weekend, I found out that the legislators voted yesterday on House Bill 404 on the perambulation. We in the town have elected to walk our borders, but there was going to be a mandate from the state that the perambulation, those walking and marking the borders of the entire town could be done by satellite. The problem with satellite data is it depends on who interprets the satellite data, what your computer program is. Even in our federal government, the USDA and the Farm Service Administration have different computer datas and they... Computer analysis of the same satellite data and it can be plus or minus 100 to 200 feet. That's significant when you're looking at a logging operation and land. So I wrote a letter, a strong letter for the town to vote as a Select Board Chairman to vote in the negative for just utilizing satellite communication to determine the borders of the town and that we should continue to walk the borders and make sure that the slashes are repainted and so it's marked accurately. That vote happened yesterday and it was 17 to 1 against having just satellite... The use of satellites for perambulation. Okay? Any questions on that?
So that will, so that bill will go to the full House on a session day. It'll probably, because it's 17, or 17, I didn't know it was 17 to 1. Where it's 17 to 1, it'll go on the consent calendar, where it has like 300 bills.
Yeah, this'll go.
They'll pass it all, but it's got to go, it has to go to the full House to be voted... That was a committee vote.
Yes.
I don't know what committee it was.
Dolen?
No, I mean the name. Municipal local government or... I don't think it was Environment Act, but that's okay.
Hang on. Hang on, I can find out. New Hampshire House of Representatives, Municipal and County?
Yeah, okay, Municipal County, Emmens. That's it, yeah, Emmens, Municipal and County, yeah. So, again, every, New Hampshire's kind of unusual. Every bill that is submitted to the legislature has to be considered and every bill, one way or the other, whether it's octopus, octopus with amendment or an expedient to legislate, is voted on by the full 400-member House.
Yep.
And so, even if it's on the consent calendar, that is, you know, it's going to be one vote to pass or, you know, whatever it was out of the committee, yes or no or whatever. The full House and a consent, consent bill or consent calendar will vote on those. But every bill that's submitted is ultimately voted on by the full 400-member House. And if you've got something on the consent calendar, a rep can take it off the consent calendar and bring it up in front of the full House for reconsideration. And I've seen bills that have passed that were gonna, or be killed, that were going to be passed on consent in the legislature, so. But thank you for bringing that.
The vote was 17 to 1, and I know, because we discussed the perambulation, how we were going to do it in the past.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Could you see if Chief Trock is available?
Yep.
Well, and can you give... Fire Chief is not going to be able to be here tonight, but he sent a copy of a report. And I will summarize it for Chief Ames. Calls for service, they assisted ambulance with a patient lift and carry as well as supply a driver for the ambulance to pump it across and due to an ambulance service that had multiple calls at the time and they needed extra help for the run. There was an alarm activation at the congressional church and mechanical issues in one of the sensors. It wasn't more of a vehicular accident. Vehicle was...
He's with somebody right this second?
Yeah, that's right. I moved ahead. With a driveway, a patient was stuck for an extended period of time, was cold. They, he needed help to get back into the house and get warm. Plymouth Ambulance handled a call for patient care. Training, last meeting, close operations for various styles of moving big water flow. New firefighters allowing all the appliances and the locations and the usages. They have breathing apparatus combined with May Day search and rescue training opportunities coming up in March. This program will be for multiple departments hosted by Drummy and a class will be presented by the New England Fire Training. They had a call for life safety code issues at a rental unit where the Chief Ames went and inspected it. They're in the planning stages of... And they put in information to Franklin Fire Department to proceed with the application for assistance to firefighters grant as a mutual aid group of 35 communities and departments are asking for federal funding to do a mutual aid wide level, Level 1, Level 2 firefighter certification. Franklin Fire is going to be the hub of the program and this will be outreach training program, it's probably hosted in various locations and is expected to be a two-year process. I think that's good, the town is doing that. You want to do as much training as you can. They had three members of the department come into some form of contact with an individual, tested positive for COVID. All of the proper PPEs were in place during the time and a quarantine process was in place and in effect. Expectably submitted by Chief Jeff Ames. Thank you. Chief?
You're up. Thank you, and I apologize. I was...
That's all, you don't have to apologize.
I have something going on in my office, yeah. So, let's see. My report for the last couple of weeks. We took part in a meeting with the Wentworth Elementary School regarding a juvenile matter that they had reported to us. We met with the school as well as the juvenile and the parents and were able to do a little educational session with the juvenile regarding certain school policies. Fortunately, it was a parent that was very cooperative, so the outcome was good. Everybody was happy with it afterwards. And we're always, we're always willing to work with parents and students. We assisted a family in obtaining some services regarding an elderly family member who was having some significant memory issues and belts of confusion. After some extensive conversation with the family and some follow-up, we determined that there was a medical issue and it was able to be treated and follow-up that the doctors later did determine that. So that's another positive outcome. We took a report of an injured deer that was laying on a resident's front lawn. I went up and located the deer. It had actually sustained an injury to a right rear leg, but it was definitely able to maneuver itself around. So I closed it off along into the woods and we didn't receive any other calls on it. So it was able to move along on its own, so we didn't dispatch the animal. We just let nature take its course and hopefully it'll survive the winter, we'll see. But it's nature, so. We took care of a vehicle that had been left on Route 25A. This was a pretty busy year for that. We had one left on Route 25A on one day, one that was left on another day. They were both determined to have been abandoned because they had trouble negotiating the snow. They didn't have the correct tires. We made contact with both owners and we were able to have the vehicles removed without having them towed at their expense. We assisted one Wentworth ambulance with a call for service with a, an elderly resident that had fallen outside of their residence on the ice. And it'd been there actually for a little bit. We were able to arrive there before the ambulance did. We assessed the patient, helped the ambulance when they arrived and were able to get the patient taken care of and their injuries treated. And obviously, they were very appreciative of us being able to be there quicker than the ambulance was. We assisted New Hampshire State Police in checking on a suspicious vehicle in the early morning hours, one of the mornings that I came down here extra early, which I like to do, break my routine up. And it was a vehicle that was parked in the O'Leary parking area just west of the elementary school. So we assisted State Police with that vehicle. There was a number of drug contraband and illegal drugs that were seen in the vehicle that were in plain view. So we conducted and assisted them with a consent search, what they allowed us to do. And we were able to deal with them accordingly. And it wasn't in our town, but we're going to help wherever we're called to help.
It was right over the border and was...
Yes, yes. And of course, my concern is it's right next to the school.
The school!
So I'm, I'm going to go, you know?
Yeah.
We spoke with a Wentworth resident in detail about a harassment issue that he was contending with. And we had a pretty lengthy conversation, let him know what his options were. After the conversation, he elected not to file a report, but stated that he would do so if the harassment continued. So that may be an ongoing issue. We took a report from actually a couple of different people. And one of them, we started with Paul and John, where a vehicle had gone through the ice, I was explaining to, I was here, the, on Kings... They call it Kings Pond, right?
Yep.
Yes, Kings Pond up at the... Somebody had gone out, driven on the ice, doing some donuts, got too close to one part where the fire hydrant is, the vehicle went through the ice. Fortunately, it was a section of the ice where it wasn't very deep and there were clearly some vehicle tracks and physical evidence that showed that somebody went out on the ice, hooked onto the vehicle, pulled it back up on the ice and they were able to get out of there unscathed.
That'll be a YouTube video.
Yes, yeah. And it also happens around the same time that we have tire tracks where somebody blowing donuts down on the Hamilton Field baseball field. So, Linda, I haven't had a chance to see you. Do you know if you have a key to the gate to Hamilton Field?
I don't think so.
Okay. Everyone I've checked with, we don't have a key. There is a lock on it? I have a set of bolt cutters, which probably I'm going to cut that lock off with your permission. And I want to close the gate and then lock it up to prevent vehicles from going down there. But the other thing that we dealt with is there were some snowmobiles that went down there this past weekend and the weekend before when I was down on those Saturdays. So we want to prevent that temptation from being there.
Sure, when's that happen, on the weekends?
On the weekends, yes.
Yeah. Do you need a vote on that for the bolt cutter?
I just want permission. I'll replace the lock. I'm sure I have a locking mechanism somewhere, but I need to be able to close it.
For safety issues, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Police Chief to replace the lock. And if you need an extra set of bolt cutters, I got some big ones.
I appreciate that. I mean, we don't have a key for it anyway, so we have to cut it to take it out.
Right. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
It's safety. I mean, it's safety and it's disturbing, you know? We don't want to have our property destroyed, so. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Chief.
And, and yes, it is on weekends. I have been breaking my patrol shift up where I'm down here.
Yeah.
One day on a weekend or two days, depending on how it goes.
Is the gate shut over to Riverside to park?
No. No, that's not it.
That hasn't been a problem?
It has not, it hasn't been a problem.
Well, it's that hill and the snow.
Yeah, and Hamilton, unfortunately, it's just because it's a direct shot across from Shawnee, so.
Right.
The first person that puts a set of tracks down there, everyone else is going to think it's okay to go over and drive over there, so, you know?
Will the gate, is the gate low enough to keep snowmobiles out?
On Hamilton?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I just haven't...
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anything for me?
No.
Questions, concerns, complaints?
How are you feeling?
I'm doing okay, actually, yeah. My wife says my head is doing great. She's just not satisfied with all that may not be in it right now, but... But it's progressing well.
That's the nature of being married.
Chief, thank you so much for your good service. Really appreciate it.
You are welcome, thank you.
Okay. Paul, really?
I really don't have much to report. We've been busy, these little pesky snowstorms. An inch or two or three has to be plowed and taken care of and the roads need to be sanded and salted. And that's what we've really been up to the last 10 or 12 days. We've been on the weekends.
Yeah, I, I think you guys have been doing a good job on the roads. You know, I've traveled even all the roads, including over by yours. I think it looks really good. How's the International, is the truck a troublesome truck?
Once on one, we haven't, we have not had any piece of equipment have any trouble. Nothing.
John drives the International, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we haven't had any trouble with any equipment.
Every time I see him come up at 6:30 in the morning to the top of the hill, I'm like, I made it none of the day.
Yep, well, we've had pretty good luck. The, I did put in my report that we did have some trouble with a load of salt. It's like the third time in a year.
Yeah, I saw that.
It was literally a frozen block of salt in the salt shed. I mean, it was...
And it looks like the company stepped up and wanted to deliver it.
Yep, they gave us the last load free.
Okay.
They delivered another load today out of Boston. It's coming out of Boston now instead of out of Portsmouth. And that load is free.
Okay.
And if we have any trouble from here on out, I told them I was going to switch vendors and it's been really good. And Laura, she's called and emailed me and... And the salt is definitely a different, different salt, so I think we're in a good shape now. Couple of free loads of salt, which is $4,000.
You held them to task, which is what we need to do. Okay. Do you want to discuss your letter?
Oh, just as far as the contract, yes? Okay, yeah, so I emailed it out late today, so it's just an informational link. But I just had a couple, well, Linda checked in with New Hampshire Municipal. And I have your email here, so unless you have more than what I have here. But it just says that it's okay for the Select Board to enter into a multi-year contract.
Yes.
And salary and benefits increases are subject to town meeting approval. So we can enter into the contract, but then we have to have a line that says any increases are based on passing a town meeting. That's the critical part in the email. There's a specific language to put in there.
Just, I'm, I'm, so I'm clear on that? So if, if we put a cost of looping increase or some fixed number increase, that's got to go to a warrant?
Right, because...
It has to be a separate...
A line item.
It just gets included.
I'm sorry, you know, I'm not used to these warrants, so you got to...
It doesn't need a separate warrant article, it just gets included in the budget for that year. And Paul's, he's already included something in this year's budget.
Right.
So it doesn't, no warrant articles needed. One great big warrant article is made up of his entire budget.
Right, I got you. Okay.
So as long as they approve the line item for his pay, then it's okay. But if the town were to strike it down, then it would go back.
I just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Yeah, so any bases are contingent upon passing a town meeting. But that's in a line item in his budget, as usual.
So entering into a three-year contract, does that still mean I work year to year, though?
No, we're a three-year contract. But, but the number that the town has approved in the past for your, for your position is the original 54,260. But anything beyond that just has to be approved as a part of your budget in a line item at town meeting, like we did last year. Last year, you made more than that because we decided to and it passed a town meeting and that was... So we can, we can give it a multi-year contract with whatever numbers we want as long as it passes at town meeting. They do a good job. I don't think anyone's going to disagree with what we negotiated. They do a good job. I don't think anyone's gonna disagree with what we negotiated.
Okay, if that's what the Hampshire municipal group says, then I'm gonna make a motion that we extend the three-year contract.
Yeah, I think Linda circulated around the contracts. I mean, we oughta take a little more time and just look it over. And I had a couple of minutes.
Let me just, I have two motions. One motion that we extend the three-year contract. And we can vote on that tonight. And then everybody digest all the information on this and we plan all the details and then vote on the details again at the next meeting.
Yeah, review the language.
The language, make sure it's the language right. Okay, so I'm making a motion to extend the three-year contract to Paul Manson.
I will second that. Any other discussion?
Call the question.
Question?
Call the question. No, call to vote.
Vote, yes.
Oh, yes, yes. I vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just have to work on the language as we go here.
Yeah. So, okay, now, okay. Are you gonna take the point and work on the language?
I started to, so I did it late today.
Because it's obvious that I'm.
It looks pretty good.
I just added a couple of things that, it's in your email, but I added a couple of notes that, you know, Omar, and he's the lawyer, so he can, I just have some few things here and there.
I didn't get to look at it today, because I've been up in.
I didn't see it myself.
I said, okay, I want everybody to have two, we got two weeks to get the details.
Yep, so I emailed some notes and I'm sure Omar and we'll just put them together and we'll discuss it next time. But I had a couple of suggestions, but nothing big.
Yeah, details are not my strength. Okay, good. So that's, do we have to vote on two motions there or just that's it? Okay.
I guess, oop, are you done? I guess the only other question was, we decided we'd talk about it this time, was the comp hours? Or do you want to wait until after the co-op thing to discuss it?
I wanna be on target on the co-op thing.
Do you wanna just hold until after the co-op? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, well, four minutes? Give it four minutes, go.
You guys said you were gonna take the next couple of weeks and look at the comp time policy and what you thought employees were able to have build up to comp time. How many hours of comp time they're able to build up to? We had the discussion.
Yeah. Okay, initially, go ahead, Linda.
We rewrote the policy. They made a motion to cap it at 40 hours per year. And what was decided last time is that we would look into it by looking at other towns and companies or whatever to see what they do with their comp policy. And that wasn't done yet. We said we'd address it sometime in the future. But for now, the current policy has been changed.
And that's 40 hours of overtime, so that's 60 hours. That's fine.
We left it at that and, you know, it may or may not be addressed in the future.
Yeah, I went into civilian type appointment and they said cap the hours. And that was the standard. And they thought the 40 hours, 40 hours capped means 60 hours in actual time was fair. I agree. Okay.
Okay. So you've decided that you cannot use some and then build back up. It's tapped, period.
If that's in your mailbox, I can give you a better copy of it.
Okay. George? It's almost 5:30?
Oh, we're right at 5:30. That clock's a little slow.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we just now, George, we're gonna come back to you.
Right, I have to see what we're saying.
We're gonna now go to a Zoom meeting with the Hampshire Electric Co-op presentation for broadband services with Bill Darcy and Robert Kruhshank.
Yep, Bill and Robert, if you folks, this is Andrew Lass, you can't see me, obviously. I appreciate you guys joining the meeting tonight. And I think what you folks had intended on presenting was just an update on where you are in Grafton County or more specifically, what New Hampshire Electric Co-op could do for Wentworth as far as broadband communications.
Yes, indeed. Bill, I have a few slides we'd like to show you if we could share on our screen. I think it just needs to enable us so we could do that.
Can everybody see?
Sure, give me just a sec.
I can see, I know, we're gonna switch.
Oh, oh, oh.
Switching so everybody can see.
Oh.
Can you see? Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting a message. It says the host has disabled participant screen sharing. So I think whoever's running the Zoom just needs to allow multiple people to share.
Yeah, give me just a sec. I gotta.
Andrew is doing it right now.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
And nice to meet you all. And Bill, what's your background with the group? I'm the new guy. Bill's been in New Hampshire a lot longer than I.
Well, I'm the selectman like you guys are in the neighboring town of Benton. And I'm a director of NHGC and imbued with passion for extending broadband to the underserved in New Hampshire. And Wentworth is one of those, like my town is, so. And here are the slides. Oops.
Almost, there we go. Thank you. So I think you said it very well, Sir Lord Henry. So we're here to tell you what we can provide for Wentworth. And, you know, we're your neighbors just to the east. The way I look forward to coming out and seeing you when there's an opportunity to do that, when we're post-COVID. We really just have one high-level slide here and Bill and I will help each other through this here. Our intent is to provide high-speed service to 100% of Wentworth's residents. That's based on a fiber network that we already have experienced building. We have built that network already in some of the neighboring towns up in Coleroke as well as down in Lancaster. And we're happy to share what we're doing there. In fact, in the end, we have a slide that just explains our whole build schedule. We will start our poll surveys and the poll make-ready work. And that make-ready work refers to when we have to attach something to a pole, like our fiber. We have to make sure the pole is ready to go, that there's attachment space and vegetation along the way is taken care of and things like that. We can do all that work and get our fiber installation before Consolidated can receive their financing, which looks to be around August 11th, based on the Hampshire municipal bond thing. Let me stop there and see if I've lost anything or if we need to add any color to that.
Well, so just so I clearly understand, that means you could start this summer or this spring?
Yep.
Yeah, just so you know, the first two things, the survey of the polls and the make-ready is more extensive than you think. Actually, once we get all that done, the layout of the fiber is the easy part. Not only do we have to make sure the poles are fine, we have to get approvals from anybody that's on the pole, including Consolidated Communications. So it's a physical process, but it's also a bureaucratic process, unfortunately. But we're ramping up to get that done and providing new fiber service as quickly as possible.
Well, some of the issues in the town of Wentworth is we're an older town and some of our poles date back to the 50s. When you say you're making ready work and doing that analysis of your physical poles, are you gonna upgrade poles if they need to be? Because some of the.
Yeah, I mean, there are some 50-year-old poles that are fine for it. There's some 30-year old poles that are terrible. But all that's gonna be reviewed and if poles need to be replaced, we'll replace them.
Okay, yeah, because what happens now is some of the older poles are a little shorter. The wires hang lower and we get complaints from the logging truck drivers that they have to raise the pole levels and the wires up to get under them.
Yeah, all of those are subject to specific requirements both by the PUC and electrical codes, which we have to comply with and we will.
Okay, good, good. That's good to know. Okay, and then the permitting process, nobody has control over that.
Well, there is no, the permitting process, though, I just abstracted, is really one of making sure that all the pole attachers and owners are properly notified of what we're doing. In your case, you're fortunate. You have us controlling all the poles because we provide 100% of the electric service in your town. There aren't that many. My town is one of them too. But it's a relatively small percentage, which is one of the reasons why we could, you know, commit that we're gonna come in and supply broadband for 100%, because you're our members. You're in the privileged few.
Well, thank you. Omar?
Yeah, I'm glad you kind of broached that topic. I'm also a Grafton County Commissioner. And we had a Zoom meeting today with the town administrator for the town of Bristol and the town administrator for the town of Kane. And Andrew Lasser, who was the representative appointed by the select board a couple of weeks ago to the county committee. I don't know if you're familiar with the fact that Grafton County last year, before I was a commissioner, appointed a broadband committee. And we had a report today from them. And I guess there's some legislation in as well. And I can't remember exactly what it was. It's been a long day. So.
Probably one-touch pole.
Yes, yes, that was, yep. So, but, excuse me?
I was gonna say, that is very important to us if we can elicit that. Go ahead, that didn't mean.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you mentioned that too. So I guess, you know, we're kind of wearing two hats here. And the county committee is looking at the entire county. And with my selectman's hat on, you know, I'm concerned about the town of Wentworth. And every time I'm on my laptop computer, it says I'm unstable. And probably my wife would agree with that. But so you can help Wentworth because you control, you know, all the poles. And but in terms of the rest of the county, it's gonna be a little bit different ballgame.
Well, we could, Grafton County is fortunate like Wentworth is. We have more territory in Grafton County and more of the areas that we won in an auction at the FCC than any other place in the state of New Hampshire. And we do control most of the poles. There are places we don't. You mentioned one of them, Bristol. Bristol, we only have 7.8% of the poles in Bristol. They're in a completely different situation than you are in most of the other towns. We are gonna be providing service to 36 of the 38 Grafton County towns. And I think there's something like 30 that have the areas which are our priority areas and which we won in the FCC auction. So we are gonna be providing a complete backbone for Grafton County as well as wiring all the towns except Frank Colerick and Bethlehem. Everybody else, though, we have our poles that we're gonna string the wire on and provide service. Not everyone is gonna get 100% coverage from us. And there are ways to dealing with that, and we may get to those towns. But our wires are gonna be everywhere in Grafton County, except those two towns I mentioned.
I don't mean to complicate this Wentworth Select Board meeting with the county. I just, I just think it would be, and I can't tell you what to do, but prudent for the co-op to kind of know what's going on at the county level too, I would think.
No, I appreciate that. And we've been trying to make contact with Mr. Coats and the committee, and I've had some suggestions. Actually, I have a suggestion for you, Commissioner, is that we have a little small-town representation on that broadband committee. It's all made up of the five big towns in the county. There's no representation in the small towns, so.
Well, I tried to do that last week and with the board of commissioners and they they wouldn't allow Andrew to come onto the committee as a member. So anyway, well.
We would volunteer, Andrew. He is very proficient in understanding what you need to do with this town.
Bob, do you want to go on with the next bullet point?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, and Andrew, I look forward to meeting you, you know, as well as everybody else. And if we can figure out a way to work it in the middle of all, we're happy to do that too. This next point, this next point is actually pretty important. We have had the fortune of being able to see a lot of the contracts that Consolidated Communications is sharing with the towns. As a result of that, we've been able to determine that, you know, this August 11th date that we just mentioned here for the municipal bond day is kind of the kickoff of a 25-month period that they have. And so, you know, their end date for having to complete construction is 25 months on top of August 11th. And our commitment to you is that we will beat that timeframe.
Yeah, we actually plan on delivering broadband to 67 towns within the same period of time. Our goal is 33 months, which would bring us considerably a few months short of the Consolidated for its promise in town by town. So anyway.
So as far as the town of Wentworth, when could we expect broadband service?
I made a show of your schedule on the last slide.
Okay, sorry, I don't, I need to jump in.
Robert, I just wanna make one point to attest that the data that they're indicating is definitely what Consolidated had come back to me with. It's very, very, I wouldn't say it's the exact dates, but very, very, very close, I'd say.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I should be corrected. I've just gotta correct myself here. So it will be this year in 2021 or next year in 2022. We have, you'll see this, we've got a 30-month schedule that we're already inking. So it's within the next 30 months. And we're gonna show you that on the last slide. The other thing that's really important to remember, and this goes back to into the contract, and again, correct us if this isn't, and you see the link up, you're mistaken. But we understand that there's requirements for payments and bonds that are being proposed as part of what you're seeing from Consolidated. And that's not our position at all. We will not require any payments or bonds or whatever. And therefore, we know what the customer sort charges on bills. And that's a big difference because that's, you know, 20 years that is being proposed by Consolidated in terms of customer source charges to pay off those bonds.
How are you gonna pay for it? That's.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. We're on the same lines.
Yeah.
So how do you recoup your investment? What is the cost going to be to the residents if you don't mind?
No, we did it. I'm gonna pick up, sure. Yeah, we did a financial analysis last October, determined what it's gonna cost us to deliver broadband to all our members, 80,000 members throughout New Hampshire. And we did an extensive feasibility study. And we're gonna be able to, we have a low cost of capital. We have, unlike a private company, we don't have a high demand on return on investment. We're doing it to benefit our members. So as a result, our requirements, revenue requirements, aren't as great. But the short answer is we're gonna get enough revenues from customer taking our services to support the money that we're gonna finance in building systems. Now, the reason why, brok, brok, the reason why Consolidated is going around asking towns for money and bonding is their cost of capital is much higher than us for a variety of reasons. The copper DSL phone business is failing all over the United States. And their bond rating is really high, so getting capital from the towns makes sense. We have our own capital. We can raise it because we have a solid balance sheet.
Bill, if you don't mind me interjecting real quick, the copper DSL that they're talking about, that's what, anyone that has internet from Consolidated in town, that's what they're providing. It's basically an old antiquated system. It's basically, you know. It's basically, you know, 90s-plus technology, very, very old.
A version of that.
Thank you.
And the service is the downtime. And that actually leads to our last point here. We will own and maintain the fiber, will maintain care of maintenance and the customer service. We have a subsidiary that you saw from the title slide we had to run in. And we feel that our service will be superior to what you've experienced with the SL and phone service.
We certainly hope so.
Okay.
Any questions before we go to the map?
Any questions here? Let me just, excuse me, let me just poll anybody here. George?
Will that include phone service?
Ask this.
Will that include phone service over fiber optic?
Yes, it will. Yeah, we're required by the FCC to offer phone service as a part of it. So, yes.
Does that mean that we keep our existing phone numbers?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you can keep your existing provider, but you can switch to us and take your number with you, keep your number, yes.
Okay, okay. Back to the map.
So, this is a map of the Wentworth area, and what we've done is we've put the NHGC meters, so all these circles are meters. This red, think of them as electric meters on the side of your house, that's what we're showing here in the green circles, as well as the circle in this red area. And this red area depicts what the Federal Communications Commission has deemed as unserved. And you'll find these maps are kind of a head scratcher because, for example, on one side of this road, the houses are considered unserved, and on the other side, they're not. So, that's why we actually wanted to do the entire town, NHGC town, that would be covered completely with the service.
Andrew, we have a question about that. Is there any cable in town?
There is. Charter has spectrum service in town. There is a, you know, core part of the town, and there definitely would be considered to be broadband in that area. But again, it's much more of the core of the town that has that.
Yeah, that's why that area to the right is green, because the FCC divides up the nation into census blocks. And if even a single person receives cable, then it's no longer up for bid in the recent auction. That area, however, will be subject to a future auction. But from looking at the map, you can tell, as Bob said, that some of the areas that are in green are definitely not cable areas. I assume that it's the main street you're talking about that has cable. That's very typical throughout New Hampshire.
Now, I had a question, Bill, on that topic. You did mention that you're going to deploy fiber for a hundred percent of the residents. How does that, how is that affected with the fact that, you know, you only have one census block right now? And this is also a part of the town that, quote-unquote, would technically have broadband? I do not know exactly who does because Charter never actually responded to my RFI when I sent it out to them.
The answer, Andrew, is it doesn't matter to us. When we did that financial evaluation I described back in October, our evaluation included not only doing the ARDOF areas, the ready areas, but reaching all our members in the entire census block. And in your case, the census block is your town. So, we've already budgeted to handle all those green dots that are within your corporate boundaries.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, actually, we've got, I've got a question here. Can, I know you said, Andrew, that you didn't really get a response from Charter, but it would be helpful for us to know if it's possible, even if you could sketch on this map, which will send directly to the call, even does the hand sketch to circle areas where you think broadband service is available? Because that helps us understand, you know, the competition. And can you, can anybody in the meeting speak to the quality of that service? If we were to build there as well, would you want to switch, or are you happy with what you have?
That's, Bill, the saver again. I suppose what I could do is, you know, in conjunction with you folks, I'd be happy to try to set up some type of survey, you know, to try to get some, you know, much more of a, like a larger answer on that. Because I honestly, again, do not know specifically everywhere that spectrum is. I just know that it's not further out from the center of town, which the center of town more so around the common area.
Yeah.
Did you have any other question?
Because our focus is, is to appreciate the unserved, and we want to, you know, put our resources as much towards the unserved as we can.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to help with the surveys, as Bob will describe later. We have a software tool for signing up customers. And Commissioner Select Board Member Hern, I had promised him, I had given the language we were going to use in Benton in our annual report to tell people to sign up because the more people that sign up, the better. It encourages speed on people who want to make sure that there's sufficient revenue to support things, so we'll provide that link. We've got a new website that's going to come live in a couple of weeks, and we encourage everybody to sign up that's interested in getting broadband because it'll actually speed the possibility that you'll get broadband sooner even than what's projected now.
You were hoping that we could get that into our town report. I don't know if it's too late now to get anything into the town report?
We have one week.
Well, you might be able to do it. Do you have a town website?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Other places?
Yes.
If you don't mind, is there anybody online on the Zoom meeting that has any questions at the moment? I don't know if there was anyone that was trying to ask one. If you do, just make sure you unmute yourself.
I think, I saw...
This is John Mead here. There is cable network or cable broadband, besides the common, it goes all the way up East Side Road as well. I have actually seen services beyond 25 all the way to the town line, there's service. So, it's not just around the common and the Ridson, it's basically almost in this whole green area, it's showing.
Yeah, it runs up to Warren, right?
Exactly, it's not 25 all the way to Warren, and also up East Side Road as well, and obviously 25 to the south right to Long Beach.
Yeah, just to be clear, so everyone knows, I do not know specifically everywhere that it's covered. I'm making assumptions based off of what some folks have told me. Because Charter never responded to that RFI, I do not know for sure, so...
Yeah.
I think, thanks, John, on that, though.
And then, as a link, as a link, Bill, I'd ask what the service would like for you there or broadband. The service is, it's, how can I put it? On the common, you'll go from evening time where it's slow. This past weekend, for some reason, you went into a buffering and unstable, and to where you have fast, some of the fast internet, which is, it's all in the page.
So, John?
That's one of the things about cable technology is way different than fiber. When there's a lot of people on a cable bill, we reduce the speed of it. Fiber does not do that. Plus, unlike cable, the fiber speeds are equal on the download and the upload. So, Zoom meetings like that and other uses where you're uploading a lot of stuff, fiber's much better for those kinds of uses.
So, just to add to that and maybe say it in a different way, so most cable providers, like Charter or Comcast or any of them, the, this, yeah, the reasoning there is the shared bandwidth and during peak times, you know, people using that bandwidth, especially during this time of the pandemic and people working from home and that sort of thing, they're honestly, they're not built to really handle this, I think. And the fiber service is more of a dedicated bandwidth. So, if you think of like a big pool of bandwidth or speed that you're able to get, everyone's kind of getting a pool for cable, but everyone gets their own speed or bandwidth with the fiber service. So, just to kind of say it in a different way if people didn't understand it.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
You know, and at some point, all the traffic that's shared will kind of slow, it could be well beyond a network that you're on, you know, it could be a far...
Can you see if you have any questions?
And that's where traffic is very important.
Oh, yes, yes, thanks.
Okay, so, we're going to pop off of this page, if no more questions, we've discovered one more slide, which gives you some of the high-level numbers all in one place. So, you see our focus on the unserved, NHGC has about 117 towns. We say about because some of those towns have already started putting some fiber work. And this is the phase one, is the work that we did up in Holbrook area as well as Leinster. That was a 100-mile network that we built in 100 days. And we're now going into phase two in the first half of this year, where we're adding additional TAPs, and TAP is the name for where your house connects to the network. So, we're adding TAPs so we can connect more customers to the fiber that we already built in phase one. And then, in the second half of this year, it's taking the fiber to connect to some of the adjoining towns. We already have the brick-and-mortar piece in place that brings the signal into the center of town in Leinster and into the center of town in Holbrook, and that fiber has been already built 100 miles, and now it's about adding on to it to get to the adjoining town. Phase four is from the second half of this year, right into that 30-month cycle that I said. That's to connect up to 67 towns, and get some of them that have fiber, so we may not get to all, all 67 may not need us to be there, but certainly all the others sort of will get to. And this is the area that we have identified with the phase we've identified for what this is phase four. And then, phase five, as Bill said, is to get to the remaining towns, which is another 30-month cycle that starts second half of '23.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who could be here?
Just answer any questions they may have.
Okay.
Any questions here? Go ahead, Linda?
Do you have an approximate cost per customer for this service?
Well, we've got rates scheduled for the Carriage project, and we may modify them, but it's a good guide to the general. We offer a fiber 2525 megabits per second, which is our base low level, keep it affordable at $49.95. And we offer the top-of-the-line gigabit service, 1,000 megabits per second, for $89.95.
Okay.
That's what I'm paying Consolidated right now.
For some of those services.
So far, you know, we have, we have more people that are in gigabit than we had expected. So, I mean, it's, that's, that's a revolution if you've had DSL for most of your life.
Just to put that into perspective, anybody that has DSL in town, most likely they're not, for the vast majority of people, will probably be getting around seven to 10 megabits per second down and no more than one or two megabits per second up. What he's talking about is 1,000 megabits per second down and 1,000 megabits per second up.
That's significant.
Yeah, it's just, it's, yeah.
I don't even know what that would look like.
You're going to have mom and dad and four kids doing their homework all at the same time without a problem.
Are you differentiating between residential and business rates?
We will, yes, everybody does. The theory is that the business, you will be using it more often than higher bandwidth demands on the system. And I don't know, Bob, we've made a preliminary cost for gigabit for business yet.
Yeah, we've just been reviewing that, we're going to review some of that tomorrow, but it's not a huge error.
I've got a question for you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Just wondering, are you held up by anything that the state legislature can do to help you get things moving?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, one of the things that was mentioned by Selectman Hern earlier, that he probably heard at the commission meeting today, is we're supporting, I testified in favor of it, so Mr. Coats, it's a thing called One Touch. What that means is, there are multiple people that are on poles, you have to consult with the pole owner, the telephone company, the electric company. What One Touch says, the attacher, whoever's putting the fiber on the pole, gets the, in One Touch, move all the wires and do all the work. Because otherwise, you'd have separate trucks, electric trucks, telephone trucks, fiber trucks, you know, doing that. We have, we have 100,000 poles in ourselves. So, One Touch would be a big plus. We were convinced Consolidated to do that without legislation, but we don't expect them to be so cooperative the next time around.
Yeah. Who do you have running that bill?
Running what?
Do you have somebody running a bill for you?
Well, it was proposed by a state senator, it's already had a public hearing. We have, we, NHGC has lawyers and government relations people that are following the bill and hopefully making sure that it becomes a law.
Yeah, well, if it's passed the Senate, it eventually has to come over to us in the House before it becomes law. I would love if you would have your folks, your legislative liaison, just shoot me an email about it.
I can, I can do that. Can you?
Identify yourself.
Let's see. Can you put in your chat where your email address is and also get...
I'm just going to give you my personal one because that's the one I can remember.
Bill, she's also on the email invite for the Zoom meeting as well.
And I will PDF these slides and ship them around to everybody on the invite, personally or not.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Absolutely. We appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation with you and to make your commitments with you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the... I think, I think you've answered all our questions. I think you've done a very good job with the presentation. I appreciate the fact that you're going to just send us all your highlights on the talk so that we can use it for future reflection. And I would feel free contacting Andrew Lasser since he is the point person for our town.
Okay, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you for, thank you for...
Andrew, if you don't hear from us in, within a couple of weeks, and we somehow missed sending you our website that allows folks to really self-select and see if they'll win service at the level, and then it allows us to keep them updated as we're making our address.
I understand. I appreciate that.
Thank you for taking the time to present to our Select Board meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
So, from what I've heard in the, from the, it says it goes up to Liberty Road, the cable network. At one time, they were going to put it down to precision lumber, I don't know if they did that or not. That's just...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it goes that far.
Well, because at one time, they were trying to figure out how much money was going to cause it to have hitched up. I'm not sure if they ever did.
I think there was a group of people that were really trying to have them running. Never easy amounts per mile when you pay them to do it. Andrew, do you have any, before we close off this topic? Are you comfortable with anything?
Yeah, I think everything went very well. I just want to reiterate the fact that it's a, you know, a completely different type of service than what anybody has in town right now. It's far superior to Consolidated, and honestly, far superior to what Charter offers in town. Now, they have really some high speeds, like a higher download rate, much, much slower upload rate. What they're, what they're offering, what the co-op is offering is, is really just much better overall. So, I'd highly recommend anyone looking into that once, once we get further along. I'd be happy to answer questions if anyone wants to reach out to me, you know, through the town, if you want to contact Linda or contact me on Facebook as well, feel free. Again, it's Andrew Lasser, so...
Okay. So, you take the point on making sure there's a good interface with NHGC, this survey, because that survey is going to show the demand in the town. If there's more demand, we're going to get service quicker.
Sure. I assume so.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Okay, George? Okay, George.
One comment about this, we had Consolidated for phone and DSL. DSL is even the phone, we couldn't hear people sometimes with the wires that go between, we're on twenty-five. The wires that go up to Warren and Terrell.
I have the same problems.
So ultimately what you could do is through them, instead of having the old copper service. Sure, I think the only benefit to that is if you lose power, you still can use your phone. But with technology today, voice over IP phones, which is basically your telephone over the internet, that you can switch, you'll be able to switch your phone, your phone number to a voice over IP line, which will go over this, this new broadband service. So you won't have those issues anymore.
Yeah, we just switched spectrum for internet and phone.
Okay.
Now you can hear people and it's much faster.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's definitely different.
And it's less than what we pay in Consolidated.
Okay, follow the agenda, any updates in the gravel pit? Okay. George, your presentation of the ambulance budget. Linda had some questions for you?
Yes, did she send you their answers to that?
Yes. Okay, now just, so I have a better understanding of the ambulance service. Okay, the ambulance service is, has representatives, who's the overall board trustees for the?
They have a, it's a five-one C nonprofit, so they have members on that board. So it's, it's not connected to any of the towns directly.
Okay. If you sit over here, you're gonna be facing towards Linda and then?
And she could hear me.
No, no, I guess it just.
No, that's fine. So they try and have representation of each of the towns that they cover. And they say here which ones they do. They're all set up and organized.
So that's a board and the board oversees the operation of the ambulance service?
Just sort of the general oversight of it. I, I looked up and where this started is back in, I think it was, I don't remember the date, I think it's two thousand twelve, where someone on the board that they had before complained about handling their funds and stuff. So the Secretary of State got involved and made them set up this group to.
To oversee it.
Right, so we're not really involved in the, in the everyday business of it. Not, nobody necessarily knows about ambulance service, what it's involved. But he did explain most of these things here. One thing that he didn't mention that, I haven't gone back to him yet, because they have a sizable loan with the IRS of like between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars that they got handed to when the previous person left.
They've got a loan from the IRS?
No, no, they have a lien, 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 yep, they owe.
Okay.
So they're working on paying off that.
And what is that from?
It's from, what I understand is the payroll taxes were taken out of people's salaries, but they weren't turned into the IRS.
So what happened to that money at that time?
I might actually be able to shed a little bit of light on this because I actually worked for one in Wentworth as that was happening. Payroll taxes were deducted from employees' checks. And somehow or other money was not managed properly, we have no idea what happened to it. But because of that, the IRS does have a lien and that's where they're at currently.
Oh, okay, so there was no criminal charges that came from something like that?
I am unaware of any criminal charges that came from that. I think I had left shortly after that happened and gone on to other ambulance services. So I'm unaware of that.
Somebody had mentioned one time that they, someone told them that it wasn't worth pursuing. So I, because that's all secondhand knowledge because I wasn't there at the time.
Okay, that sounds like an interesting story.
Yes. So you did break down the, the costs that they have here? Did you have any questions about those?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that since all that happened with the IRS, that it's entirely new management? That we're not dealing with the same people?
Correct.
Because I wouldn't be comfortable sending money to those people.
Correct.
Yeah, because you're asking the select board to make the recommendation on a vote to continue the services.
Right, but I think this, Chief Ames mentioned when you were talking about it before, this is cheap doing this, if you're doing one of the tired things to get ambulance service or you're forced to rely on Plymouth, you gotta call and then you gotta drive from Plymouth to here, which takes.
Well, Plymouth may not be the only one, it may be worth, worth it to the town. Let's explore all the opportunities. If we have trouble understanding the budget, then we are gonna explore other options. If, if, if it's not clear.
I wish, I wish Paul Clay was here.
Well, you know, this has been the problem. We've asked, we've had budget meetings, we've set up our budget for the year. Everybody else in town comes to play and they never came, they never came. And now it's against the wall.
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a problem with the two thousand, the office expenses are excessive. And it's passed off to billing. And yet you've got a billing company that you pay eight thousand to nine thousand dollars a year to do that. So you're paying, you're paying a billing company eight to nine thousand dollars a year and you want two thousand dollars for office expenses so that you can, who, who's doing it? Are you guys doing the billing or is the billing company doing it?
No, that's gonna be a question for Paul.
Right, unless we get these questions answered, we're not gonna support continuing this contract. Period. I mean, I, I just, we do not, you've gotta have good fiscal behavior.
Right.
Okay, you guys have a great reputation for your AMT, but you have to have fiscal behavior.
Right.
I know they're coming out of a hole and I feel bad, but the select board in the town of Wentworth, we didn't create that.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, let's, so that's a, that's a big question right there. And that question needs to be answered, okay.
But I have the, Moses' answer to the office expenses.
Which one are you looking at there?
Office expenses, two thousand plus a year, I'm just right here.
For seven thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. I think he explained it quite clearly that they need to send out demand letters.
Okay, they need, okay, they explained clearly.
And the trace for postage and the.
I got that, but is it the billing ser, you're paying nine thousand dollars a year for a billing service? That's the job of the billing service.
Where, where do you see that, I'm sorry?
Professional legal, professional legal things. It says five to eight thousand dollars per year. If they had come and explained these things, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
That is to build primary insurances, that's a big job. Usually that requires a full-time person that.
I got that, I ran a medical practice with a hundred employees, okay? I know how it happens. But I don't pay, I don't pay a service company to do that. And then the practice ends up paying postage too. That's part of the fee of getting your billing done. That's double dipping. Okay, so we need an, we need an answer to that.
Four dollars and five cents a letter is if they're trying to collect something that hasn't been paid. It's not everything that we allow to.
Okay, what I'm getting at is we need a better explanation. Seven thousand dollars for office, oh, there we took one through that. And then utilities, you got one building. And you're spending fourteen thousand dollars for utilities from one building?
Yes, that's, that's one of my.
I mean, it's not, the building is an entourage by full time.
Yes, it is, there's two people there twenty-four seven, as well as they have sleeping areas, a kitchen area and they have to keep the garage heated for some of the medicine they have in there, some materials. That was in one of these. So they heat the whole building as well as the food pantry.
Why can't they keep medicines in the regular building?
I don't know, we have to have some of that. But they also, the food pantry.
That's why I was coming up, we're gonna come.
The Warren Food Pantry, which is down below them, they heat that area as well, pay the electricity for that. For, and they have restaurant-type refrigerators and stuff. So that's part of the utility bill.
It's a lot of money for one building.
Yes.
That's a lot.
I think there's a lot of space that's heated.
Do they need to heat all that space? I mean, that's.
Yes.
Fourteen thousand dollars to heat one building is off the chart. How much does it cost to heat your town shop?
I keep it at about sixty-five degrees and heat and electricity, last year I had a hundred and five thousand dollars. I mean, obviously.
That's a big bar.
Yeah. I'm not sure what they.
That's one-third the price of what we're.
I'm not sure what they could do about it, but they're, I think it used, it was a store at one time, some sort of convenience or grocery store. So there's a large room that basically has some lockers in it, but then on the outside of that room are offices and places where they sleep when they're on duty.
Well, that's their problem to solve. That's their business, they're the ambulance service. Because they don't, they don't fix that problem and they don't manage their business properly, the town of Wentworth is just obligated to just spend the money? Isn't that reinforcing poor behavior?
I'm not sure how much it would cost them to reconfigure the building to only heat to.
Well, you might wanna stop thinking about it if they, if all of a sudden they don't get the money from Wentworth.
But if they don't get the money from Wentworth, they won't be doing calls, calls.
That's right, then the town may have to search out other alternatives.
I think you might wanna look at that before the, as well.
I think we're gonna stop looking at it. But you can take the word back to them, that they haven't explained their expenses long enough.
All right.
And I appreciate you coming, George.
All right. Well, I did.
I just wanted to say that I think those utility expenses, now that he's broken them down, are reasonable. I mean, just for this building here, which is less than two thousand square feet, it costs us ten thousand dollars just for this building for utilities.
All I'm trying to do is explore.
No, I'm just saying, the same utilities that they have here, which they listed, whatever they did. They listed, you know, heat, electric, cable, da-da-da-da. So you said they have a forty-two hundred dollar square foot place?
Oh, I don't know how big it is.
Oh, plus they're saying that they have, you know, they're doing the, the big food pantry. They have refrigerators for them all day.
This, this warrant is for the ambulance service, this warrant is not for the food service people.
Well, evidently it is.
George, didn't you just indicate that they're, that they're paying their way for utilities? The, the lower level?
I don't know.
I thought you indicated they're paying heat themselves for the lower.
I'm not sure.
Electricity is very reasonable when you consider all that stuff. And the, the same with the heat. Cable, that's a little much, I don't know why, twenty-six hundred, that's like.
Twenty-six hundred a year?
Yeah, he started forty-nine dollars a month.
They probably, they probably do.
I don't know what they.
That's a lot for cable.
Well, maybe.
Two hundred and sixteen a month.
Yeah, maybe he's considering internet and cable.
Do I pay it before I cut you?
Because they do have people living here twenty-four seven, so.
So they do have cable, TV cable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Library tends to go to the biggest numbers first and the biggest by far is just the payroll. It says that they pay twelve to fifteen dollars an hour. How many people are there at a given time? It seems like it would take a lot of hours at twelve dollars an hour to have a four hundred thousand dollar payroll. I mean, I'd like to see the breakdown of that.
The payroll for the town of Wentworth is what, four fifty?
The whole highway budget.
The whole highway budget.
They have two people there twenty-four seven at least.
And then every other day they have, they run a crew of four because they also run the transfer crew. So they have a crew available for nine-one-one and a crew available for inter-facility transfers.
Your, your salary budget is as big as the town of Wentworth? What else, anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to see the breakdown of the payroll because that's ninety or eighty percent of this package. So that would just be, because at twelve bucks a minute, if they're there twenty-four hours a day, you know, I'm gonna ask them to pay less because twelve or fifteen bucks an hour is cheap, in my opinion, for the AMT. But four hundred out of five fifty is something that should be explained, just so we can see.
Maybe you can answer this, the facility transfers, what I, I'm assuming I know what that is? Like going from like one hospital to another or like Glen Cliff down to Lake Spear?
So Glen, when, when they get phone calls for Glen Cliff, it's, those are always nine-one-one calls. And they do transfer those. But inter-facility transfers are the patients that need to go from Spear Hospital to Dartmouth for trauma, life-saving surgeries for. No, but what they do.
You get paid for it.
Yes, they use that to offset the cost of everything else.
What comes out of the town of Wentworth doesn't.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, that's why I'm asking the question, like, why would Wentworth be paying that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By, by doing that, that keeps their other costs low. That offsets the other costs, I believe that offsets the other costs.
Is Plymouth paying, is Plymouth paying the ambulance service to, or some type of, I don't know, insurance or something like that? Is that how the offset is?
No, so if it's an inter-facility transfer, if it's a transfer from one hospital to another, the patient either pays that or their insurance pays that. That's money that comes in that hopefully keeps their costs low in other areas.
Okay.
Okay. Anything, anybody up in the audience that wants to contribute a question?
I, I had, I had another one, this section for George. Is it just yourself that's a representative?
Currently from Wentworth, there've been, I forget how long I've been doing it, but Francis Muzzi was on it, Tim Monier's been on it, Corey.
Corey, yeah.
Corey Cormier's been on it and Brian, your voice was on it and they all turned around and leave.
Is there any, is there any reasoning behind that, you think? Or, and I heard other towns have done something similar and I'm kinda wondering what, why there's such incredible turnover?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, there's people from Warren, start and stop.
I, I do, I do wanna indicate that I'd love to help out with that. I mean, if you guys are looking for another representative, I'd love to help out, so.
Yeah, we could use somebody from Wentworth. Now we have one person from Wentworth, one person from Dorchester and two from Warren.
I, I guess I'd like to ask the select board if, if you folks would be okay with that as well?
With you participating?
Yeah.
I would be.
I would be, I would, I would be encouraged. It would make me feel a lot more comfortable. And George is doing a good job, George is presenting data here that, that he's been given.
Right, and I know there's only so much that.
I think this needs to, you have to, you have to lead, have an interventional leadership there that sets a standard.
I would like to see Andrew, I think he'd be good. I would like to see Andrew, I think he'd be good. He's...
Yeah.
How many, if someone's doing the job, then I don't always question things or if I question things, it doesn't necessarily give an answer that I really like to get.
I think it's, the EMTs do a great job. It's just, I'm not seeing it, I'm seeing a disconnect between the business end and recouping the money. And because they don't do that, then they're relying on the town. The town has to suck up and pay a lot more taxes to get, to make it float. It's a needed service, but it need, they need to step up and do a better job of maintaining themselves. That's all.
They have a thing with what, I forget which insurance company it is, but the insurance company sends the money for the ambulance costs to the person.
Right.
And then they don't pay it. Then they have to start this $4 a thing.
That's the collection.
Collection, yeah.
That happens in any medical office, any dental office, any ambulance, you know, it's, it's not fair and it screws the person that's providing the service. I clearly understand that. Linda, you comfortable with the miscellaneous I'm gonna get to here in a minute?
Um, but which were? $10,000?
Yeah.
Well, I think that maybe that includes the $400 a month, the IRS bill because it's not listed anywhere else, is it?
No.
Okay, so these are little questions. You know, we, we do want to be in support.
Sure.
Okay. But, you know, just the answer, just having to answer those questions, okay? And I'm sorry, go ahead.
My overall point is that even though it's new leadership, once you hear about missing funds and IRS and things like that, they lose the...
Credibility.
The credibility to put something on your desk and not have it questioned. And when you ask them to show up to explain it and things have gone missing in the past, that, that trust level, for me, is not there at all when I hear things like that. And just to see an overall budget and say, sign it, and when we ask them to come in and they don't come in, when we don't get a full explanation...
And this is not a reflection on you personally. I just, this is a reflection on the, the leadership in the Wentworth ambulance service. If they don't have, they need to be able to step up to the plate and defend what they do.
Right.
It's a lot of money and we can't trust that that's okay because there's obviously been issues in the past.
I, I believe that two legitimate questions, a breakdown for the payroll, and they didn't even address the $10,000 miscellaneous.
That's what I, that's a big...
No, I, I mean, yeah, it needs to be addressed.
Here, you want to tell, that really wants to answer this?
Why don't you send an email to the director, the...
We can, we... Okay.
You have? I, I'm just saying. I believe you. I believe you. I do believe you. I'm just surprised that somebody doesn't answer and say, yeah.
It makes me very suspicious when you show up. Not when you show up, you defend some awkward positions within the government. Chief Ames comes, Chief Trot, people come to play.
It's a big check that deserves some name.
Okay, John, you're sitting there watching. You have any questions or comments?
I kind of concur with Jordan in that we can take 24/7 times two, that's $17,500 per annum. And you run that into the $400,000, you're coming up closer to $23 an hour. So there's too much of a disparity on the payroll. I don't know if it's administration. I don't question the utility at $14,000 a year to run something 24/7. You know, there's a big difference between the town and bar and trying to keep an ambulance heated and plugged in. A lot of those things are plugged in, their big energy sucks. And I think you're probably paying for the downstairs. I, I don't doubt you're not paying for that space. But I kind of question the $400,000. That seems to be either that or the $12 to $15 an hour is not a true figure. It's not reflecting correctly. That's my comment.
I can't believe you get an EMT to work for $12 to $15 an hour.
That, a basic BLS, basic life support, a, a just barely newly trained EMT, $10 to $12 an hour standard. In 2012, I was the EMS provider of the year for the state of New Hampshire and I was making $10, $25 an hour.
That's a heck of a deal for the town.
Okay, so let's, George, to move forward positively, we're starting to get some answers on the payroll and just, just all we're looking for is explanations.
So I did bring, actually I brought just three problems for you people. This is the thing about some of the, you know, they don't just run around with the lights on, it's other things, they, services they perform. And the second page is their Affordable Community Care Program. And I think that everybody got me on that.
Mm-hmm.
It's $35 a person or $50 a household that if you have a 911 call that involves them, it won't cost you anything. Even people that don't have insurance, they take care of. So, I mean, that's, that's a benefit that went back to the town. I think they, now they like every fire call, they go in.
George, thank you. Andrew, they go in every fire call then?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's all that matters. I, I can't, I can't say it 100%, but I can tell you that every structural fire that I've been to, they typically been there.
Okay. George, thank you.
Yeah.
Um...
Andrew?
Is that, so are you folks alright with me working with George there to maybe help out?
You have to vote on the whole board.
Okay, alright.
Any, or...
Yes, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to nominate Andrew as another representative to the Wentworth.
And that, and that...
I was told it was, said we weren't really representatives for town, we were a town resident that were on the board.
Well, I think we're making a motion, second here, it's a motion. We're making a motion and I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Oh, yes. You represent the town.
Okay.
And you, and then come back with information because that's the database we need for making decisions.
Yeah, I'll see if I can't get him to, get, make, the next, the next meeting's gonna kind of late, isn't it? And you're punching things.
I need to have, no, we can't wait till next week. I need...
He's got to step up.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday is DJ.
He needs to get answers to Linda.
Okay.
George, why don't we, why don't we talk offline then?
Sure.
I'll give you my information before we take off tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so establish a timeline, get the information to Linda. Linda can easily get it to us if, I mean, if we got to do any motions, we'll pull our act together. But I think this can be solved between timely answers to the questions, getting the information to Linda and just moving forward.
Okay.
Okay?
That's good.
Just stay positive, okay?
Yeah.
I just, they got to do it right.
No, I understand, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. I know I put pressure on you, but...
That's fine.
Okay. The next thing is Becky?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes, to go into a non-public.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, difficult question. Okay, we're gonna move into a non-public session pursuant to RSA 91- A colon 3. Matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board unless such person requests no good meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of fees, fine or levy if based on the inability to pay for poverty of the applicant.
I second that.
Okay, I vote yes?
I vote yes.
All my votes, yes.
Yes.
Alright, I'm ready. I'm gonna kick everybody off the Zoom meeting and put the YouTube video all set. Have a good night, thank you.
See you all.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
So we sealed the minutes.
Okay. Now, I have to make a summary.
I don't know if just up in the minutes, do you?
We've discussed a lot. I made a motion to... I just got something that we just discussed, right?
Yeah, I think just very, very roughly.
Yeah, I know. We discussed a housing... No vote was taken.
It's being addressed.
Being addressed.
Being addressed.
Yep.
Being addressed. Being addressed is better than no vote.
What... what are we doing right now?
Is this summarizing? You have to sum it. We went from the non-public...
No, 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 no. I know that. I live non-public.
I have to summarize.
I have notes on the non-public.
Okay. But I have to summarize it in the public session.
We voted to seal those.
You did, yeah.
Yeah.
Now he's just summarizing in the public part.
You don't really need to do that. You never do it.
I thought you were reading something off of there, Mr. Chairman, so that's why I'm assuming.
Yeah, I was. I thought... yeah, I was reading off of here. I was just making a summary of what we did in the non-public.
Okay.
You do have to... We had... we've done this in the past every time we come out from the non-public. Is you just do a general statement.
Yeah. So I know what we're in for.
Yeah. So we were in a non-public to discuss a housing situation at the request of the health officer. And the health officer and the chief trauma will address the situation accordingly. Thanks.
Yes. In time.
Except the first encounter.
For what?
You weren't available.
The one day. Now, are there any other questions, public comments?
And YouTube, April, I mean...
There wasn't anything from before. I did make it go live as you did the summary. But there's nothing up there right now.
And I moved to adjourn the meeting. I second that. Vote yes?
I vote yes.
Oh, yes.